Being 10 again at the Patiño de la Maravilla. Okay. In our meeting agenda, the first point is to welcome you to call to order the town hall. So, welcome. Thank you for being here. We have a lot of information and we want to share it with you. So you are informed, which is one of the points of the supervisors committee. David, tiene... Excuse me. The second point is the meeting procedure. As is custom already, I will make a presentation and the questions will be answered at the end of the presentation. For the questions, each person will take a turn on the microphone in front of the podium, starting with your name, number and your question. Please try to be short. If you want secondaire questions, please go to the back of the line. The third one is administrator supervisory committee. Our supervisors committee is presided by Steve Kimi, who is not here at this time, Jones, Pink Person, EDR, La Ventana del Mar, Dennis Leibman, James Pashut, in Aztejas, Martin Rizek and Kevin Lambert. As always, I want to say thank you to all of you because of your assistance and your hard work to make this happen. Thank you. And next is a reminder of the next public meetings day, which are the Bellas Meeting in November 1st, the GA meetings in November 2 for EDR, and November 3 for La Ventana del Mar and Aztejas. And now the fourth point is September newsletter. As I say always, I encourage you to go and visit the web and look at the newsletter. There's a lot of information this month, a lot of things that you can get to know, things that you ask sometimes through friends or other ways, like there is information in the newsletter. This month, for example, we have information about the GA ordinary meeting calendar, supervisors' forms for whoever wants to run for a supervisor position. There are the forms, there are the information that you have to submit. There is owner initiatives. And there is plenty of information like town hall timing, town of San Felipe information, events, and so many things. Still, the newsletter is the most visited page in the website. The next point is number five, supervisors' positions for renewal at November GA meetings. One position with La Ventana del Mar. Mr. James Pashut has sent us his profile and his form. So we're already going to publish on Monday when we set all the budgets and all the information that we have already prepared for the GA. And in the position in Aztejas, which is wanting to run again, Mrs. Martin Rizek. She has already filled her form too. She has submitted it. We'll send it out too with all the forms that we sent out. Number six, this is a point that I have been asked and the supervisors have been asked a lot, is the master trust and individual trust. The master trust is already... We already... The company make already the change from HSBC to TIM, Banco Imobiliario Mexicano. Still, you have to renew your data with the Banco Imobiliario Mexicano. So you are requested to send that information and you have to contact Mr. Juan Manuel Pérez in Mexicali in our offices. He will help you with everything. When we start to follow this process with the company, they were more than 2,000 forms sent out. Still, there are 1,200 which has not been answered. Remember that you have to fill out the paperwork to be in good status with the law. So please follow up. You just have to call Juan Manuel Pérez. Juan Manuel Pérez is our guy in our office in Mexicali. In customer service, you can get his email so you can get in front of him and he will satisfy all your questions. For the ones who have individual trust, same thing, you have to contact Juan Manuel because HSBC is going out of business in the trust business. So if you stay in HSBC, there will be the moment when nobody will take care of you at HSBC. And this is not El Dorado, this is not just San Felipe. This is all around the country. There are more than, I can say, more than 50,000 trusts which will not be taking care. Right now, they are running to the apartment with three people. You can imagine. It's a crazy house. We have been in contact with them constantly. Jesús Solos is in constant with them. So they are helping us to make the transfer as easy as possible. But please contact Juan Manuel Pérez. If you are in the master trust or in the individual trust and he will take care of the steps that have to be followed to help you out and be in good position. Okay. Juan Manuel Pérez. The bank. The original one was HSBC. The new one is Ucana Revé, P-I-M, which is Banco Imobiliario Mexicano. Like TIM. Okay. The next point is safety and security. One of the safety issues we are confronting is overflow vehicles. Right now, they are banned from the seaside. And we have received several commentaries about that. But mainly, the people who lives here, I can say that I have received a lot of very good comments on that because right now it's a lot quieter, it's less movement. There's still some, starting in October 6, only the residents who have ATCs and the owners and residents of El Dorado and La Ventana del Mar and Aztejas can come into the seaside with ATC vehicles or overflow vehicles. But you have to stop, please, to customer service office to get a sticker for your vehicles. Many of you have already done that, so you don't have to worry. But whoever doesn't have done it, please stop with Selena or Olita. They will be happy to assist you. If not, the security people, even if they know you forever, they will stop you and say, "Please go to customer service." So we let you know ahead of time. The eighth point is collection effort. We keep working hard. EDR, it's making good. We are in the last stretch of the year, which is becomes less in this collection. But we still hard, trying very hard. La Ventana del Mar is low. We are 15 down percent than last year. So I encourage the owners of La Ventana del Mar, whoever who is the win win, to pay their dues because that's money we have, we work. Okay. The next one is projects. In the project in EDR, the pergola number four is finished. Right now, we are doing another pergola for the heat pump and the new gas burner that we bought this year. We were looking at them and there's so much sand that it can damage the machine. So we decided to make a pergola over them. Presumably, taking account all the safety issues. We read the manuals and there is gap that has to be kept between the burner and the top of the pergola so it can move air and it doesn't cut fire, etc., etc. But we have done that. We have been checking on that. Another thing that we finished completely is the tennis court number four is done. That was done from scratch again. Right now, we have the four courts in good condition. And we finished to the central tennis court, which used to be the pickable court at EDR. Right now, all of them are tennis courts. So we have tennis center and we have a pickable center in La Ventana del Mar. So I think so that's a goal that has been followed for three years. Right now, we are done and it is in very good condition. We will see in the slideshow how we have done the work. You can judge by yourself. Another thing that I want to communicate, we already ordered some lounges for La Palapal. They are arriving around October 15. It takes long time to bring them, but they are finally arriving. Give us one week between because that don't depend on us. Storms and road maintenance. Well, you know now that Rosa is coming. It's very close and it is expected to come into San Felipe between Monday and Tuesday. It will break a lot of war. There are 10 assistant places in San Felipe in case of emergency and people has to move out. I don't know if you know this, but in San Felipe, there are like 50 very dangerous areas where people is living. So maybe if there is a need there, some of them, they will have to be evacuated. And there are already 10 places where they can go. The most knowledge maybe that you know is the rowing team building. They can go there. The camp school, which is for children with special disabilities. So this is... They have 10. And today, the authorities of Mexicali, they are getting together to implement the urgent or urgency response teams in San Felipe. So this is... They can care very seriously. And I advise you to be careful. If you don't have to travel to Mexicali on those days, don't do it because there will be plenty of war in the roads. It's erratic. Rosa stays here today, the next day is here, the next day is back here. So you have to be careful. We will have a slide in the presentation when we can see how is it going. It's the first one we have had this year or maybe in three years. So the other ones have been delayed to the Pacific. But we don't have to confront this one. Our team of workers in the ranch, they are ready to start working as soon as the water stops. So this is the information about Rosa. Please be very, very careful. This is what I have in the agenda. Now I am going to the slide presentation. As always, we will go to the front. What does not work?
No.
Stop going?
No.
Okay, we will start the presentation as always with El Dorado Ranch. Here we have the two HOAs, El Dorado Ranch, La Ventana del Mar. Next, please. El Dorado Ranch, we will start with this one. This is the nice inch of their trunks. Next, please. This is maintenance that we have been doing in Vista de Sol, Vista de Mar and Elipso Rose. This was after the last rains, which were very light. But you can see that some areas, in that areas get flooded, get damaged roads. So we work on them. Two days and we're back tomorrow. Next one, please. This is the last view when the previous was being done. Here we have another area flooded and water running by the sides. You can see, this is very exciting and very nice to see because you can see here the water running by the sides, still by the middle of the roads. So we have achieved the kind of quality work in the roads that we were looking for. One of our residents is the person who gave us the advice to do it in the way that we are doing it now. So we are avoiding the deterioration in the middle of the roads. Next, please. For sure that saves money and time. This is how the work is final. This person told us to not finish totally the roads because the cars will finish that and will be ever better than we do it the way we used to do it. So now we are doing that and they are very coming good. Next. This is a map. I haven't received a lot of commentary. Roberto, what are you doing with the roads? No, I haven't seen the machines in the roads. All these marks in yellow, this is Rido 1. All the marks in yellow are the roads that we have been working during this year. So you can see that we have covered almost 60% of Rido 1, which is not bad. Next mark, please. Rido 2, same thing. You can see that we have done the main roads all the way up and down in each section. And there are areas, for example here, or certain areas here, for example, that there's not, maybe one. It's because nobody live there. So why do we do the roads and spend money and spend time and spend our machines if nobody lives there? They are called the sites maybe. So we do the main roads, the lips and all that so that people can move from one side to the other side and keep where the people is living, the roads in the best condition as possible. Next one, please. The several posts of CFP are there in this condition. We have called them once and two and three and 100,000 times and they don't show up. For sure, if you don't pay your bill, they will be there next minute. But when we call them sometimes, they don't answer. So we decided to reinforce the post and forget about it. This is not a big expense, but it adds a lot of safety to our workers, to our residents. This is a trans tool, EDR. Here you can see the accounting buildings. So if this one falls down, it can hit the building in customer services or where human resources is working with. So we decided to do this. So right now, I think so it will last more than anyone they have. Next, please. We installed two new LED lamps on some T2 road. And we don't have the picture here, but I have been receiving a lot of commentaries for two years, I accept that, about the lights that come from Highway 5 to the customer service building. We added all those lights too. Right now, all the road from Highway number 5 to the customer building, customer service building are there. So we have lights. We have totally lighted area there right now. Next, please. This is the same thing. We have the lights here. And this is a trunks where we installed one of them. Next, please. As you can see, in the summer, in the past town hall, we start doing this. Right now, all the gates have excellent handle rod because they got so hot that our guys get blister sometimes. Next, please. We insulate the roof of the accounting office. We have to do this from time to time, but in that way, Rosa will not go into the computers and all the inside building. Next. The office of human resources has a very old wood stair going into the office. So we replace it with an iron one metal with very good steps. So right now, anybody who goes to us for work is safe and employees too. Next. This is the monitorio gate is the one which is right in front of the trunks off to La Ventana del Mar. So just across the street where we built a new tower in the last three months. We added this because we are going to put a reading gun for IDs and the computer is going to be right here. So as you can see, we are trying to improve our IT power, let's say, so we can make it faster for the people to come in, even if they go by this gate because we have a reader for the gates in the other, in the main entrance. Next, please. This one happened, one of our residents have a problem with his car. He lost control and he hit this side of the building in customer service, provoking damage. And we take it out of the park, we fill it up, and right now, it looks like this. Here, they were given the finishing, so this white is not there. Next, please. This was a water company cover. It was damaged. Some people has fall down on it. So we decide to make it too. We will not wait for them any longer. And this is not... I prefer to make it that having an accident, which can be very, very hard for one of our residents. Next one, please. One of the requests that I received during one of the town hall meetings was to make a storage for the umbrellas of the owners wants to bring to the Cachimia swimming pool complex. So there is it. They put their own lock, which is with combination numbers. So they can put their umbrellas in, they can take them out. And there is a guard in the door who can big watch. For sure, the responsibility of each umbrella is that one for the owner. Next, please. We renovated the size of the swimming pool area with rules so that people can read them. I usually see the people just walking by. They don't even turn to see them. But when they arrive to the gate, we tell them the rules again. The guy who was at the gate for many years, who was the lead in terror, he decided to leave the company, the HOA, I mean, and right now, he retired. So he is enjoying free time at last. But at the pool, we require that the people get to know the rules, so for the pool. Next, please. This is what I mentioned, the pergolas have been in construction. And we are starting right now the pergola, which is going to be for protecting the heater pump and the burner. Next, please. This was a work of four years. These grates were brought originally from Spain, but nobody knew who sold them. So we made contact with several pool suppliers and request them to find a manufacturer of these grates. Finally, we found it. They are not cheap. But right now, we have all that installed around the jacuzzi. And we are already the whole part of the main pool at Cachimia. We will be keeping doing this. As I say, they are not cheap, but they look very nice again. The only bad problem is that the sun and the chemicals affect them. Next, please. Here is the new grates in the nut pool. This is like they were. Right now, this is like they look now. Next, please. We added handicap handles at the jacuzzi showers so that people can hold on while they are washing their feet or whatever. So right now, they are there. Next, please. This is what I say to you. The new rain pack water here, which I call the burner, is this one, which was about in the... This was an old one. This is a new one. So this is the condition it is. This is the condition it is after five years with the sun on top of it. So we are going to protect this one. Next, please. This is the number court, tennis, number four tennis court. We repaired it. We took all the wind screens. We took all the posts that were rusted or broken or whatever. And we changed them, we rebuilt them, and then we put the wind screens back. For the next year, we are going to buy two sets of wind screens. So we will start right now finishing in all the look that is necessary. This is the condition it finished. So I can say it's really, really good condition. Next one, please. This was a pickable conversion, filling the holes that were the nets used to be, and the dividers. And then same thing, taking all the wind screens out, starting to work in all the cracks and all the things that we have to repair before starting the final process. Next, please. Here, they were already painted the white lines. We have to paint the... First, we give a base of a product, it's like a tar. Then is the blue paint, the green paint in the outside, and the lines are the last ones. And for sure, we'll repair all around the posts and the fence that were damaged. Next, please. This is how it looks now. You can see the one in the center looks very, very, very impressive right now. And this is how it is ended up. Next, please. This is repairs that we have done. Rido 3, the air compressor got broken, so we have to install a new. Next. Water to cover 2007 chassis maintenance. As I say before, in our tanks, we take everything now, we take the tank out, we prime and then paint all the chassis and then we install the tires. We prime the tank and we paint it so our trucks try to be as when we bought it. Next, please. This is International 2007. The chassis broke, so the water weight is heavy, very heavy. And the water moves, even that we have separators inside the tank, the water moves. So the water movement broke the chassis, so we... What we did is we welded and then we weld a plate of iron on top and then we bolted out. So it's going to be very hard to be broken again. Next, please. The back hole, two pistons broke down on the back. They were replaced. Right now, it's back on work. Next. Back hole, two new tires installed. They were out. You can see them right here in the back. And this one is the one in the back, sorry. And this one is the new one. Next, please. The garage rookie that used Montano for his inspections all around the ranch for TRC purposes, broke down the engine. It has been repaired long, long time ago. Right now, it's in good condition again to work for at least another three to five years. Next. Ecology trailer, we bought two new tires. The other ones were in semi-good condition. We just bought two. Next. You can see that they were there almost to the point that a mosquito can punch them. So when we saw that, they say, "Hey guys, you have to tell us before this happens." So right now, they have two new tires. Sorry, this is the ecology truck. The ecology truck, they have these two like this and say, "Guys, you are moving this car. Be careful." So we changed two tires there. Next. We washed all our units, the trucks, the vehicles in maintenance, vehicles in security. And we have a fleet of 28 vehicles right now. So we bought them, we washed them, so we don't pay anything for that. Next. New water corners for the gates and for the tennis courts and several areas. So we bought six of them. Next. This is a kit that our security people has all the time in their cars. This is when they assist an emergency, medical emergency. They are prepared to assist the people. Next. Security cable for programming our radius. This is the gun that I said that we are going to install in the gate across La Ventana del Mar trunks. Fly slide switch, which is for the lamps that we use at night. Water cooler bulbs. So we don't... When the bulb doesn't work, we just change it and we still use the water tank. Next. Water cooler. Right now, as I say, in the last town hall, we are maintaining our infrared system. We bought photocells, photocells chargers, and we are checking, we already have a routine of checking the photocells in the infrared system. We recharge them and then we put them back into where they have to be. This is done daily and it's a very fast process. We keep that to keep this, the ranch as safe as possible. We keep that to keep this, the ranch as safe as possible. Next. Still in security, radio batteries. You can see how they end. These are the new brand ones. And this is flashlight recharge for white gate. This is in the end of Toño Road. I mean not El Salto Road, at the end of El Salto Road. Radio battery charger. Next. Security, same thing in the summer. The wheels are hot as iron sometimes. So we provide steering wheel covers and the three car mats, so the carpet in the cars stay there, those were out. Next. Emergency lighting, security vehicles three and number five. They are right, right now they are installed there. Next. Security vehicle number six, tailgate replacement and security vehicle number four, door handle. This is because of the damage that the cars perform at usage. They stay working shifts of 12 hours, but 24 hours today. Next. This is the last car we bought for security. New security vehicle Tacoma 2010. You can see here in the back end of the right side, the last false bag that we used to have in our fleet. We keep it because it's in good condition still, but it's not a car for the work we do. So we are keeping it for replacement when one of our units has to go to the shop. And this is used by administrative personnel in security. Next. We do a training in night firefighting, which was very good. The fire department from San Felipe come to provide a training and our firefighters here at the ranch took the training. You can see they were equipped with gas and everything, oxygen I mean. And they have their suits. We have a very good supply of suits right now. Next please. We have been training our people constantly. We know that sometimes we have fails, we have problems, there are complaints, but we are in a program of training our people. This is tourism guide seminar. This is a seminar that was given to our activities people. At this time, three of our guys took the training. And they are right now, they make an examination with the tourism office, and they were approved. So right now we have three registered tourist guides in the Department of Activities. Why do I decide to do this? Because we make trips to the wine country. We make countries to the desert. We go to the pools in the desert. So right now our people is trained to do that. They were doing a good job, but now they can do a better job. So this is, this was Mexicali. It was a very slow, low, low cost of 200 pesos per person. And when they come to the ranch to make the examination, the three guys we send there, they train another two guys that we have here. So right now, we have three registered guides and the other two guys who already presented the examination. They are waiting for their results. And I am sure they are going to be approved and we will have a two of five tourism guide producer. Next please. Same thing. Our pool people, this is Nico, the supervisor of Levantana del Mar. And this is Marcos Lopez, who is the supervisor of EDR. And they took some of our, so he's got their guys to take the seminar. Pentair is the equipment we use to maintain and do the work in the pump, work in the pump room, and the different machines that we use and equipment we use for the pools. So another good thing is that we have a direct contact with Pentair. Anything that our workers in the pools need, they can call Pentair for sure in working hours. And they receive assistance from a Spanish-speaking guy. So we can solve 95% of the problems very, very fast. Only when we have to replace parts or measurements or equipment, then we have to do it. But right now we have a very good backup. This was done very well, who helped us. And this was Bob Miller, who was a supervisor in EDR. Next. Cotupo teamwork seminar. Same thing, this was done here in San Felipe. This was for free. But we sent several of our guys, you can see them sitting around. And we are trying to do that our crews work as one man. When we give an instruction, everybody understand it, or at least that's what we try. Next. This was a very interesting seminar. Ricardo Perez, who is the manager of operations, went to this seminar. Is private security as a reference to all national level. So this was a seminar that was proving that in Baja California, the private security has reached a very good level. So it shows like a parameter at national level. You can see that there was a big assistance. There were several speakers and people who has big companies across the country. There was the representative of the state of Jalisco and the secretary of public security of Jalisco. And there was the secretary of public security of Baja California. So there was people very high level, and it was a very good seminar. We are inviting, we are trying to bring the guy, one of the guys who was a very good speaker, for sure. We have to deal with the money, but what we are going to do is try to make a trade. If not, if it is not possible, then Ricardo will do booklet to make that seminar refer, because it was big, big. So we can provide the information, the main information that he got about private security for our guys, supervisors like. Next. This is activities, we bought for equipment, a DVD Blu-ray player, new one. So you can enjoy right now the highest quality in the pictures that are shown in the pavilion. We bought a portable speaker for the pool and for events and an HMDI converter for when nights, which helps too with the Blu-ray and all that. Next please. Activities, the repairment of their car. This was already very hard work. So we repaired the transmission and we add a new battery. So this car is still going for another five years at least. Or until we have to change in accordance with our turnover cars, so to keep them the best way possible. Next. Activities, belly dance and natty dance classes. The guys are trying to keep inventing or developing new activities. Blind volleyball. Water donation to San Felipe. This is another of the activities they participate in making the needed, assisted, in this case with water. You can see they were in the school here, providing water to the girls and boys. And here they are providing to the poorest area of San Felipe. And here you can see your donations and the help that you have provided to make this happen. Thank you for being that generous to San Felipe. Next. Activities, cornhole tournament, diving movie La Palapa, employee's Friday celebration. This is something that our employees receive with a lot of joy and they are very thankful to the HOA for providing this to them. Chugo Jeca kids game at La Palapa, the Kiskaba. Big, big good time. Next. Otos eating contest. This is always lying there. Labor day water volleyball, Monday short golf tournament, and night volleyball and potluck. Next. That was VR. Now we go to Levantana del Mar. Next please. New flags. With the strongest winds we are having, they get destroyed very fast. They last one month, we are looking one ounce and a half. We have to be changing them very often. But they look very nice, they're very nice. Next. No operational vehicle sign. This is already posted in the entrance. And it's going to stay there, so we don't have all the problems we used to have in the past. Next please. Perimeter trench repaired. This was rusted, so we have to change it and we prime and repaint it. This is in the entrance or by the exit side of Levantana del Mar, going from inside to the highway fine. Next please. This is a problem we were having very often. It's incredible, but people keep cutting the chains or breaking the locks in the beach. They want to come in at any time, they get scissors and they cut it. We were buying chains, we were buying locks. So what we decide to do is right now, everything is going to be in this box. So there is a lock, we can open it, we open the gate. And we don't have to be buying chains and locks. So it's incredible, but it happens. Right now, this is the beach gate and this is the big gate at the right side of the small one. Next please. These are the padlocks, masters, who are one of the better ones that are available. Next. This is the season for palm tuning. We have done all the main entrance. This is going to the beach. We keep it going until we finished. Next please. This is the entrance to the pool. We repaired it, it was already rusted with the humidity of the pool and from the sea, it gets rusted very fast, but we keep it as best as possible. We have been working very strongly in the cleaning of all the areas. That includes EDR. Lately, we have been going with Marcos Lopez in EDR and with Nico in Levantana del Mar. They are checking the gardeners, all the lines, everything, everything has to be neat. Next please. This was at the Palapa Pool. This part was broken and it was very becoming dangerous because people can break an ankle there. So we repaired it with cement. It looks like this right now. We could not match the color, it was going to be impossible. What we mark like they are mark the older ones, so it looks similar. Next please. Breakers boxes painted at La Palapa. They were in this condition. Right now they are like this. We are in the process of putting these cables into a pipe, so it is protected. Next. Water leak repaired at 90559. This is happening very often right now, but we go and fix it as soon, as soon as possible. Many of the leaks are repaired by SESP because they already received those areas. The ones that they don't repair, we are the ones to repair. Next one please. This is another one. Here you can see that it was needed to make a dig, a deep dig. Here is the repair line. Here is when they are changing everything and doing pipes. And this is the end of the work. Somebody can recognize its home by seeing that. Next, this was done by SESP. You can see the guy from SESP here. This is the uniform from SESP. Next please. Water leak repaired circle in the circle number one. In that area, it was broken, we fixed it. Next please. Search plant connector replaced. This was an old one, and this is a new one. This is a need that we have to do. When they broke, we have to put new ones. Next please. I just play all of this, maybe it seems like a little thing, but it takes time and it takes money. So that's what we explain and we present it, so you know what we are doing. Las Vegas. Next please. Stereo locks maintenance at condos 70 and 75. These were the conditions they were. This is like they look right now. Next please. Condo 34, parking space repaired. We added, this was getting broken. So we fix it, we make it like this. And now it's not going to get broken again. Next please. Vegas number one fence, pool number one. My tenants, we paint all the fence again, so it's in good condition. Next. AC drain system installed condo 33 dash three. Some of the lines from the ACs, they were falling in front of the garage. So they made slippery, they made it dangerous, things like that, so right now. Originally, they were done like this before. Right now we are installing them into the walls, so they don't go bad from the outside, the most we can. Next please. New batteries for a water truck, Tacoma 1986, and a green Toyota Tacoma of maintenance. Next please. Okay, this was a repairment of the pump room in pool number two. There was a water leak and there were some damage in the walls and things that we have to redo. So you can see that in the past, we bought this water heater. So right now it looks like this again, it's okay. Next. Water leak in repairing front condo 28. This is Don Baez. This was when it was broken. Right now it's fixed and it's back to normal. Next please. Water leak repairing front of condo 44. Same thing, this was when it was broken, this is fixed. And this is the damage, it can count sometimes, water damage. Next. Water leak repairing front of condo number 90. Same thing. Water leaking, we are fixing that. Thanks please. Water leak repairing for condo 14. You can see a lot of water leaks right now because condos have like at least 12, 14 years old. So things get rusted, things get old, and they get broken. Right now we are fixing all of this and they will stay good for years to it. Next. We found a leaking in one of the pools in number two. It was a big leak. We worked very hard to find it because we couldn't locate it. The water line was under the building. That was making very hard to find it. So when we finally thinking, going to the place, making little holes to find out, we found where the leak was. So we decided to make a new pipeline outside of the building. Right now you can see, this is the... If you are looking into the front of the pool, this is the left side. And this area is the back, which is, this is the back. This area is this way. So we put all the lines, this is from the front to the back and then all the way down behind the building. So right now, if any leaks happen, we will detect it immediately. We will have to work breaking walls again or making holes or whatever. Right now it's going to be very easy and fast. Right here, you can see we have to take out the ingitory, we have to break the back of the toilet, we have to dig all around. But next please. Here is finished. And we put another water control, a master control, so we can detect if it is from the main or is after here, it's easy to find out. Next please. Painted buildings that we painted during this, from June to here, condos 39, condos 67, and condos 77. Next please. Roof repair at condo 11. Next. Roof repair at condo 153. Next. And roof repair at condo 151. Next. Roof repair at condo 234. Next. And there's the end of the presentation. I just wanted to say something about the roof repairs. Right now we have only three more to repair. Rosa is coming. So now we are going to see. Because we haven't repaired the whole roofs. We have been repairing with the owner reports. I have a leaking here, I have a leaking there. So we go and fix it. Because we don't have enough frame to find out if there are more. But if we, after Rosa, for sure, we will know if we have more or that's it. But if we, after Rosa, for sure, we will know if we have more or that's it. Right now, we have only three to go. This is the presentation of our EDR, La Ventana de Mar, on Las Vegas. Now, thank you, thank you. I want to stress that all this work has been possible because of all of you who are paying your dues and their work. Thank you. Now I open the floor for questions, so if you will, please come to the front. I will wait.
Good morning. My name is Sammy Aspore. I have two quick things. One, the Cachanea pools, they're not very good, thank you. There's a place in the corner for smoking, but there are no signs around the pools themselves for people to know that there is no smoking by the pool. I go there every day and I have to go and say that I have to come and talk to people. So it'd be nice if we have signs around the pool saying no smoking. The second thing concerns the HOA and the individual trust. My understanding is that people who are in the master trust, the HOA pays their annual fees. If that is correct, people who don't have properties in the master trust. We have three properties, two of them have individual trusts, one of them has a master trust. So why are the HOA or people who have their own individual trust the same as people whose property is under the master trust? I think we're paying double this way.
Very different. That's why I suggest the people to call directly with Juan Manuel Perez. He is the expert here. So if I say something that is not hundred percent accurate, that will be a problem later. So Juan Manuel is the guy to call. He will explain in detail all the questions, all the differences, because I am not the master of that.
Okay, I know Juan very well, so I can call him.
Yes, please. And any, this is my recommendation. Please call Juan Manuel. Do you have any doubt?
Uh, thank you.
Good morning. My name is Tony Quevus. I've been here, living here for thirteen years now. I live in a bottle of better than north number two. And I'm here twenty-four seven. I don't leave this place because this is my home. But I have a question. I read the newsletter, the El Dorado newsletter the other day. And I want to find out from yourself, Roberto, or maybe some of the supervisors here can help me on the initiative about the Balfammer Initiative, about keeping people renters or short-term renters or long-term renters who are renting on this side, on the seaside, about they won't be able to use, like I said, a pool. Now, is that also that that include that they can't use the pool in order to use to do volleyball or do water aerobics? Is there, what is the reason behind that?
Okay. The, first of all, let me explain briefly. The residents and owners, they're visitors, I mean family, they are allowed to go to the Cachanea complex. They don't have to go. They will have, as always, passes, which will be received by visitors, and they will go. The renters, one of the problems that the initiative presents is that nobody foresee the number of people that was going to come down to rent in El Dorado. At the time, the condos was done, there were not as many condos being rented. The numbers that the people used to manage at that time were from the traders right from the beginning of the rental opportunities. But right now, there are almost two hundred units in rent. And one of the problems is that the property management companies has been increasing the number in beds in the houses and in the condos. And I have stressed that to the property management companies. Because I have been receiving commentaries from them saying to me, Roberto, we have three rooms, but we can put beds in the living room. Or I can put two or three units of beds like bottom floor. And I say, you know, guys, that's not the intention. The intention is that the people comes and enjoy a nice time in El Dorado. But let the other people who lives here in any side be happy and enjoy. Don't even that they owe up. Because I have been, if you remember, people tends to forget when they told me, Roberto, there are fifty people in one of the condos. And then I was, I was playing, you have to do something. Yes, we did. And we controlled that. We did. There are still some people. And yes, I can see heads moving like saying, no. Well, remember that some people rent three or four condos or three or four houses? I cannot do nothing if they just get together for a carne asada in one of the four. I don't have control over that. It's like if you invite your friends to your house and you invite thirty people. I would go and say, you know, the limit in your house is four plus two, six people. I cannot say that. But the rating unit, yes, I did. And I sent to the PM companies a sheet of paper saying, this is the limits of people that's going to be there. I am, they love me, I can tell you. They love me. I received trash back from them, but I say, you know, guys, this is not fair. So that's the main complaint. Another thing that people is complaining about, not able to be using lounges, chairs, tables, because they are taking. So now, I am not the judge. Remember, the HOA is the messenger. This is something that a resident presented.
Now, now, is this, is this already a done deal already?
No, this is going to be presented at the PM and it's going to be voted on by them.
Okay. Because, let me ask you something question now. That pool over at La Palapa, is it heated?
Not yet.
Not yet, but it is gonna be heated. It has been heated for a while.
That's a plan.
Yeah, because if it's gonna be people using it in January, February, March, I think like an, like an ice bucket. That thing is really cold. So you know.
Yes. That's one thing that has to be done in time. There many, one of the things is when the pools are more crowded, it's in the summer.
Right.
And in the summer, if we are talking about tourism that comes from Mexicans and other people, they don't care about getting the water. They prefer to go and get refreshed by the water. Because the heat outside is strong enough to be.
Severe strike to the water. I think, I think you mentioned my question because there's people behind me. They might stand me like that.
Thank you, Tony.
Hi, I'm Charlotte Carr. I live in the condos. I, I swim.
Thank you.
I swim in Cachanea Pool a lot. I do laps. Um, and I want to say something on behalf of David. I don't know the story of what all happened there, but I know he was not a happy camper. David had been doing this for like nine years. We've been here eleven years. He knew us by name. At the first of every new year, he would check our, our passes to make sure our dues were up and, and we had paid for the new year. So I don't see a reason that every time we went in the pool, he had to check our IDs. He knew us by name. He knew us, we had paid our dues. So I just wanted to say that on behalf of him. Um, the new guys that are taking our IDs need to do more than just take our IDs. I've seen kids jumping off the dams into the pool. I've seen people come in, whole families, not one taking a shower. I have also seen people go in with all their clothes on. So they need to be monitoring stuff. I don't want to be there monitoring people. Um, so they need to do more than just sit in that room. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, let me answer to Shala. Okay, David is here. He has the right hand of Jorge. So he will tell Jorge. And I will speak and Ricardo will speak with Jorge about that. One of the things that, let me tell you, there's no way that the guy at the front gate knows who pays his dues or doesn't. That's why they request the ID card. The only way they know if you are paying your dues is showing your card and it says two thousand nineteen or two thousand nineteen, whatever the year is. So that's why they have to see it. If you already pay your dues, it has a sticker in the back, so you are allowed to come. If it doesn't have it, well, you are not allowed. Even if they know you very well, there is people who has been here for longer than I have been here. But some people don't submit dues, so we have to check the IDs. Uh, we will have to do that, but I agree with you. Our new guy is there and he's not totally training. It's not an excuse. We will train. We will. And the other thing is that when David has been staying for years, I want to retire. I am done. I want to go. Almost each time I went to the pool, I say, how are you, David? Get ready to retire. So when they think you say, okay, I am not. So that's it. That's it. I have known David for many years, many, many years. He used to work with me in player club, in hotels, so we know each other for a long time. It was not a fight when he went. It was a, make up a retirement. Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Rich Black. I'm in Los Adanos North. And I just wanted to clarify about the master trust. I'm in master trust. I filled out paperwork with Bill Burns a while back. Uh, is there additional, you're saying I have to contact Mexicali in addition to what I've done with?
Yes. First thing, I don't know exactly what Bill Burns papers filled with you, filled it up with you. So I advise, Bill Burns is sales. Juan Manuel is in the economy department. So I, I suggest you, it's just a call. If you are okay, we will tell you. You don't have to do nothing. If you have to do some paperwork, we will tell you, okay, this is what we have to do. And we will guide you step by step until everything is finished.
And I called who? Who, who are you suggesting?
Juan Manuel Perez. You can go to the, where girls in customer service, they will give you his email and you can email him and if necessary, you have to.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Good morning. My name is Mike Miles. I live in Viseo del Sol. I have a short little request. About six months ago, I received a response from the, uh, the HOA website where you go and submit an electronic ticket to have some repairs done or a complaint or whatever.
Request for action. Request for action.
Request for action. Thank you. So I went online, uh, I think it was around last January or February, and I submitted a request for action. And last April, I received a reply that my request for action has been submitted and in the queue for, uh, to be completed. Well, here it is, six months later, and my request for action is still not been completed. So I'll explain to you what my request for action is like.
Okay.
As you drive into the Viseo del Sol entrance, uh, when you go past the guard shack, the road splits, you can go right or left. Right there in the middle, there's a, there's a nice wooden sign that tells you the directions to all the different subdivisions.
Yes.
Vista del Sol, Viseo del Sol, etc. Well, that sign is really old. The paint is peeled. It looks horrible. So my request was to have it repainted.
Okay.
And what we've done, for example, in my block, on our block, is our block sign was all old and worn and chipped, so I had Arturo Gomez repaint and I have a nice block sign right on my block. So that was done. I've seen also that Arturo Gomez has painted the uh, center of the equestrian additions to some of the signs out in the back of the elliptical road and so forth. So I just wanted to mention it and say that A, it hasn't been cleaned up and B, it would be nice to have it cleaned up. And C, if you're looking for somebody to paint the signs, maybe you can contact Arturo Gomez.
Okay. In the back waiter is Ricardo Perez. He already took notice and he will do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Hi, my name is Barbara Saunders and I'm at Port de del Sol. I just have a question about the off-road vehicles. Since you say they're not going to be allowed in the La Ventana area and they're going to be in a gated area behind links, are these renters allowed to come into El Dorado Ranch with their vehicles and run up and down the roads and in the ranch itself?
Well, the decision of not making the, not permitting the peoples in this side was by the developer. Because the renters were going into the golf course with their vehicles, destroying the greens, destroying everything. Uh, for years, this was happening. And we were talking constantly, the company and the HOA with the property management companies. And they say, yes, we are going to take action. Yes, we are going to take action. Guess what happened? Never. So the developers say, no more because I don't want me spending thousands of dollars from the owners to the golfers, Cespo, and from the company for these people to come and destroy them. That's why that was the decision. In the Montali side, that was not decided like that. Because as a matter of fact, the number of renters is a lot lower, a lot lower. And sometimes, I don't like to say these things, but for example, from my point of view in my office, sometimes when I go out, I don't smoke, so I just go to, to see the area. Uh, I see many people racing in our roads and they are not visitors. They are residents. And sometimes when I am driving, I make this slow down and they say, I don't want to. So I like to just joke and laugh and say goodbye to them, but we live here. We have to take care of where we live. That's why I suggest.
Well, my question is actually, the renters from La Ventana who bring their toys and they are going to now be parking in fenced in area, correct?
Yes.
Okay, if they are a renter at La Ventana and they want to take their vehicle out of that fenced in area, are they going to be allowed to go into EDR and run their vehicles? Because in, even the renters over on EDR side do run their off-road vehicles through the green belts. And they fly past people's homes and they're not safe. And so if these people are gonna as well be allowed to go in there because now they don't have a place to play with their vehicles.
Yes. One of the things is, uh, it's incredible how the commercial cars are selling. Because for example, in the beaches, they are prohibited, but everybody goes to the beach. They are not allowed to go into highways. They are always between the highways. They should not be around downtown without helmets. They do it a lot. And sometimes the authorities just say, okay, I won't see for a while because it's a big date and the people comes up. Okay. But the real thing is that more and more it is restricted. But the people likes and loves to go buy those, those toys. So the real thing is for years, for at least, I think so, ten years, there has been a racetrack or I don't know what it is called, right next to, when the property management was, where the new guy with the internet.
Rations?
Yeah. With the new services is Sima. There used to be the officer, there was an area, it's like a loop where the off-road vehicles used to go. Uh, nobody enforced that at that time, so it got lost in time. Even the property management forgot about that. So the people start running into La Ventana de Mar. Right now, one of the things is that to push them to go there, not going through the green belts, not going. We will mark that so the people know, you can go here, you will not be disturbed by nobody. But the idea is, no, you cannot go to, what's the reason to just go ahead through all the streets where people lives with your AC at full speed and sending sun to everybody? That's not good policy.
Okay, so is security going to keep them from entering? Okay, so is security going to keep them from entering the gates with their toys when they have a renter on this side?
When, when they are here, yes. Over there, they have to go where they are renting. But we will read them, when they cross the line, our security people will tell them, "You cannot go through the green belts, you are not allowed to go into the streets. You will have to go slower, you just have to come in and come out wherever you want to go, but not in the ranch."
What I find is that that's going to create a lot of toys congestion on the EDR side, especially on Saltillo Road and all the side roads of Saltillo because that's the area of the gate, of the fenced-in area, they'll go in that side gate, they'll play around in that whole area.
That has happened, that has happened, but we will be looking. Right now, we are just guessing. I know there's going to be abuse, there's always abuse. And we will have to work very hard on that. We will be working on that.
So you will figure out a way to control it?
Yes, we will try, that's what they can say.
Thank you. And then my other question that I had is about the master trust. Is there a way that we can have Juan, Juan Perez, is that correct? Can he come and be a speaker for all of us on the trust, what is expected of us with the Fiducia?
That's a great idea, we can do that in the jail.
Because there's a lot of questions, a lot of questions.
And there's going to be a lot more people who usually is not here during this time of the year. That's a good idea, let me.
And if there's a possibility that we do have to sign up for something that they might have a little seminar for that, for us to do that?
Let me talk with him. I, I, I was talking with him yesterday and, but neither he or I got this good idea. This is a very good idea.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Not going to charge for the talk, funny. He is, he is working with the company, he will not charge. Thank you for waiting for us, thank you.
Ross Wilken, Vista Del Mar. I'd like to take a moment if I may to address the issue on the Chachanilla Pool. I'd like to begin by reading part of it with a proposed initiative for those that haven't seated or are not familiar with it. It is proposed that effective Tuesday, January 1st, 2019, the use of the Chachanilla Pool will be restricted to property owners and those renting a home in El Dorado Ranch only. This area is commonly known as the mountainside. The reasons for this that are listed is that the number of people occupying rental condominium units usually exceeds the normal occupancy unit of units. Most of the security violations and deliberate destruction of not only condominium units, but the common area as well comes from those renting a unit. The majority of renters of La Venta Del Mar units are currently using the mountainside El Dorado Ranch Pool. This pool is commonly known as the Chachanilla Pool. The Chachanilla Pool was built and paid for by the El Dorado Ranch Homeowners Association. The maintenance and security of the pool area is supervised and paid for by the El Dorado Ranch Homeowners Association. The elimination of renters will return the pool to the people that paid for it and maintain it. That's the initiative as it is. I am actively opposed to this initiative, but feel that some problems do exist. But those problems exist for less than 30 days a year unless, and yet we are proposing a 365-day-a-year draconian, somewhat racist in my opinion, solution. The EDR, the EDR mountainside property owners most certainly have the right to vote on a proposed solution to existing problems. I personally welcome our Mexican, American, Canadian and international visitors to use all of the EDR facilities and be allowed to see and experience the wonderful life we live here at the ranch. However, I do recognize the legitimate concerns this initiative attempts to resolve. As is the democratic process, I felt voters deserved more than one choice. To that end, I proposed and submitted to be entered on the November ballot along with the other initiative, a less drastic solution that does not have as much potential to be considered racist. I disagree with your statement you made just a few moments ago that the HOA is not just, is not just a mess near. And as you put forward to the group, things that we propose. However, my initiative was not allowed to be submitted to the mountainside owners to vote on. The committee members, which consisted of nobody who ever uses the pool, took it upon themselves to turn down my initiative without checking back with me with their reasons and it will not be presented on the ballot. Therefore, not giving a choice, El Dorado Ranch owners. And I quote the reasons that it was turned down. The initiative is similar to one already on the ballot. Are you kidding? That's exactly what an initiative is. They have property and they have property. Two different proposed solutions to the same problem. So of course it was similar to the initiative that was already on the ballot. Number two, your initiative would be too difficult to enforce. Translation, our security, swimming pool and activities staff that make up the largest portion of our HOA budget are unable, unable, unable or unmoving to do their job. This excuse comes up at every HOA meeting when security or enforcement issues are raised by owners. Though I dismiss both these reasons for denying property owners a choice, I wish to request the opportunity to reissue my initiative proposal with modifications, eliminating the two excuses given for turning down my first submission. I feel that one excuse need not be further addressed as it's not a legitimate reason. Written in the handles I have until September 30 to submit a proposal for an initiative, September 30. That's why I'm bringing this up at this meeting. I just got notification yesterday that it had been denied even though I turned it in three weeks ago. So I'm requesting formally the opportunity to turn in a revised initiative that you may have the opportunity to look at it and that you may decide whether we have the right to vote in November. Thank you.
Okay. First, we are not avoiding the work of security. But I want to see who will be able, once 200 people, Mexican people is in the pool, enjoying with their kids, they will not listen to a whistle, being whistle. You have seen many times, we residents, not just renters, when our security people goes and talk and say, "We are going to take down the umbrellas because the wind are going to destroy them." You will not, over my dead body. And those are residents. Sometimes the security people goes and talk with a Mexican guy or whoever. You know, you have to put the paper, the pampers for the pool. I won't. So you have to take out the children. Maybe. It's not that they avoid. I have received complaints because we have one security people 24 hours or the most time we can there at the pool. And I have received complaints because I don't have three.
Let me interrupt you just for a moment, in the interest of saving time. I've addressed those exact issues because I assumed that was part of the problem. Therefore, I have written a new initiative that I think directly addresses those. So my question is, can I resubmit the initiative? Can you re-review it and then come back to me later with reasons why you didn't accept it? That's all I'm looking for at this point. I don't need the reasons that you're against.
Okay, let me respond to you. You can submit it, but we have not had any time now to send it to the resident people because we have to send them maybe.
In the written test thing to me, it was told that I had until September 30 and you needed the proposals before then so you had time to review them so they could be in the next newsletter. You cannot tell me this meeting took place on the 26th, three or four days ago, that because of those and then I got notification yesterday. You cannot tell me that now suddenly there's not time for you to look at it again and publish it in next month's newsletter. Now, I'll go on since you've got me angry.
No, no.
Okay, I'm saying, I'll outline in front of everybody what my proposal is and if you want, you know, you want to make your decision then in front of everybody, that's fine with me.
No.
Okay, then allow me to submit it since it's not September 30 yet.
Well, okay, now let me talk. First, I am not saying that you cannot submit it at that. It has not to be published in the newsletter. I didn't say newsletter. I said we have to send the information to Concord for all the people, and that's in the rules of regulations. People have to receive the information when we send all the paperwork from Concord with the new budget and the new situation that are going to be discussed or presented at the.
You have to revise the website because it doesn't say that. I specifically read it and the website had said, "It's impossible to send us out to everybody. Therefore, we needed time to publish in the newsletter." That's all it says. It's in your own website under resources.
Yes, but we are talking about two different things.
Yeah, okay. So the answer's no.
Oh, you can submit it, submit it.
And will it get a fair hearing? Will it get a fair hearing?
Yes, why not?
I don't think of a lot of reasons why not. Thank you. You're welcome.
Good morning. My name is Eddie Jones, for those of you that don't know me. It's been our pleasure to be a supervisor for mountainside since day one in the HOA. And I'm going to ask you to begin this on two points. Number one, I've written all this out so I don't mess up any facts, facts that can be corroborated and facts that are easily checked. Number two, I may have trouble reading it. I had gone blind in my right eye because of complications of a cathodic surgery. I will get through it, but I want you to listen carefully. Now, numbers are boring, but I'm talking about your money. Mr. Wilken has taken a position opposing what occurs on the mountainside bridge. He has called us racist and selfish. Now, I don't make up the following facts, I really report them. Now, prior to five minutes ago, there were four supervisors in this room that was present and serving as supervisors when these following facts occurred. Two HOAs were created in January 1st, 2005. There's the EDR HOA and the La Venta Del Mar HOA. Lastis is not an HOA, is part of La Venta. Now, first of all, there's been talk of owner's rights being violated. You can't write that's true, but it's owners of the mountainside whose rights have been violated. Their pool that they bought and paid for and maintain has basically been taken away from. Now, Ross says those pools are empty nights in the time. Pretty much is correct because my family, your family, and renters all come down on the weekends, so that's where the tools are used. Now, from the very beginning, listen just very carefully. From the very beginning, the HOAs, the EDR HOA, Pay La Venta HOA, $360,000 a year just to use the Palapa tool, that's $1,000 a day, every day for 360 days a year. That was just for the privilege of using that tool. The beach warranty was public, available, so the $360,000 is purely from EDR residents to use the Palapa tool. By the time we opened our pool, we paid La Venta approximately $2.5 million just to use the pool. Now, a rear supervisor nearby approached this officer who was administrator at that time, "For the 80 EDR HOA to build a pool complex since a developer was, she was supposed to do it, couldn't do it." The owners and PAC approved the project. Now, this is when the Comunado contract was created. I chaired that committee. For those of you who don't know what that is, the Comunado is PAC donating the property where the complex is now and tax-free for both him and the HOA. Now, $135 million later, we have a pool on mountainside and about $200,000 a year maintenance. Not one penny was contributed from seaside. And that's fine, we didn't ask them to. It's our HOA on mountainside decided we would do something for ourselves. Now, even though EDR paid about $2.5 million to use the Palapa tool, the committee which was I was part of declared that La Venta owners, Lastis owners, their families, their guests and their long-term lessons, not renters, could use the pool complex at no charge. Now, that's pretty damn reasonable. Now, what that means is, EDR can use the Palapa tool, La Venta, Lastis owners can use the mountainside pool. That's reasonable. Now, when the condo pools came along, the people on the mountainside and non-condo owners, "We can't go use those condo pools, but a condo owner can come use our pool." That's okay, we have a pool, we don't need to go to the condo pools. It's just a principle of the fact. Now, the first year our pool was broken, the mountainside EDR is still paying about $50,000 the next year for propane for the Palapa pool because Palapa needs money. Now, my problem is, $360,000 a year is far in excess of what is required to maintain that pool. For our entire pool complex, first thing, about $200,000 a year. So 360, that's about $160,000 more that was needed to take care of the pool in an area much smaller. Now, the renting, the overcrowding problem is, is what's created all this. The mountainside owners have lost control of their pools on the weekends. Now, rental companies have been getting for every condo they rent, they've been getting eight wrist vans. And that means eight dogs plus probably eight kids can come use the pool on mountainside. Did you know if you're in mountainside and you're a owner, you can only have four guests? Now, who do you think overcrowded the goddamn pool? Now, when Roberto found out that, he corrected that, that he didn't know what's going on. Basically, in a rental property, it's supposed to be two wrist vans per bedroom. Am I correct on that? Now, but the guy getting out the wrist vans for every condo ready, he's getting eight of those vans. And the best I can tell, there's about 104 condos up there. Multiply that by 16. Or mountainside, multiply by four. What the hell have you got? You got overcrowding of people who didn't invest here, don't want to invest here, and you know what they paid to that tool? $35, $35,000. Property management companies advertise on Facebook that they should bring air mattresses and they can all get wrist vans. And that's no longer true. Now, the reservation fees has been done again is approximately $100,000 a year. We've been splitting that 50/50 between both sides of the highway until this budget. With this initiative, they're going to pick up $20,000 more dollars. So they're going to keep 70,000, mountainside's going to keep 30,000. Now, that's fair because they're going to keep a lot more renters. Now, let me just give you some more numbers before I get off here. Now, let me just give you some more numbers before I get off of here. Twenty fourteen, there were twelve thousand seven hundred thirty-eight renters and two hundred and eighty-nine kids. Twenty fifteen, there were six thousand nine hundred eighty-four renters, three thousand eight hundred seventy-two kids. Twenty sixteen, seven thousand five hundred eighty renters and four thousand one hundred seventy-four kids. Twenty seventeen, nine thousand two hundred fifty-six renters and five thousand seven hundred eleven kids. Now, Val Doherty, who cleared this initiative, has been catching a lot of help from a lot of people, and I want to thank her as an individual and former supervisor for protecting your life as you're over there to have what you paid for, what you maintain. Thank you.
I'm sorry for my ignorance. But yes. I'm Janessa, I live in condo two four. First, Mr. Atlas, I'd like to thank you very much for the umbrella storage. It's working out wonderful, very helpful. We don't carry umbrellas from our car. On that same note, we only had two umbrella stands and eight umbrellas. So if you could check out possibly getting some more umbrella stands, it'd be appreciated. Back on the pool and a lot of what was said earlier, it's my understanding right now that Activities is also acting as security. You showed upon the screen all the wonderful things they do for this community and how much fun. It's very inappropriate and ineffective for them to act as security. It's not going to happen. These guys have been around forever, they're here to have our day fun. You need people out there in security uniforms and enforcing the rules. And if they're your employees and they're not enforcing the rules, see ya. That's what I do my way. They need to enforce it, and that's going to stop, you know, some of the problems you're having over there. But I don't think that's Activities' job. Their job is to entertain us.
Well, I agree. I agree with you. As a matter of fact, they have the instructions, and they don't have to act. If they see something happen, what they have to do is call security, and security is the one who have to do it. But they are our eyes in the pool, because they are there all the time. So I don't ask them to go and work with the people. What they have to do is call security, and security will come in. When the security guys are at the pool, you will act immediately what he's saying, what he knows.
We had an incident the other day, and that's exactly what they did, but it's very uncomfortable.
No, I thought, but again, I know about that incident. And everybody commented, "We have been in that situation before." And our people have been, for example, Jorge himself, have gone and said, "Please make a complaint, we will follow up." "No, no, no, leave it like that."
Well, it's the same thing, no beer in the pool. The same people have the beer on the side of the pool. These guys could tell them all day long, get the beer out of the pool, it's not going to happen.
You know, sorry, I am going to talk next time about the beer in the pool, because it's not something that we don't want to happen. If you want our pools closed, keep doing that.
Okay.
Because the health department has a rule that says there is a limit for food and beverages around the pool. If they come one day, when they come and check the water for ammonia, if they decide that the pool is surrounded by food and beer, they can close the pool. They haven't done it, but they can do any day.
The way to properly handle that is with security and activity staff.
I agree. We will do that. But please respond to the security people in the way they should be taking out the beer in the pool.
Oh, I do. No problem.
No, I am not saying you. I am talking to the full board outside.
And a maintenance issue up the road right here outside of condo one three, there's been a light that's flickering from the streetlights for like three weeks.
One three?
It's, it's on the road right here outside of condo one three.
Primacundo, on the.
On the.
Uno tres, condo uno tres.
That's it. And, and last, I do love walking around the ranch here. Do you know there's not a garbage can outside here? I walk down the main road, I pick up the garbage, there's no garbage cans, there's not an outside garbage can by the ATM machine or a La Palapa, anywhere. We have a, a community full of artists. I was just over in Lake Chapala in Ahahí, their garbage cans are beautiful. We need to have some, even going into the pool, Chachanilla Pool, there's no garbage can out there. I see beer bottles, cans, whatever, thrown on the, on the road there. It just makes sense to have some cans put out.
Okay, I'll take note of that.
That's it. Thank you.
I just want to apologize for allowing my emotions to get in the way of the things that I said. I'm just apologizing to you, the supervisors, and everyone that's here. It masks, unfortunately, my, my absolute point. I'm not against at all the submission of the other proposal. That guy has all the utmost respect for Val and for the supervisors for putting it forward. It shows they care about their community. I have no problem with that, although I wouldn't vote for it, but it belongs there. My issue was simply that I have an alternative proposal that some people may prefer over that proposal, because it's less proponing. So my anger is that I cannot, or that that proposal was not allowed on the ballot, that's all. It has nothing to do with my disdain for the other proposal. And all the reasons presented for the other proposal are absolutely accurate, I know the numbers, I did a lot of study of them before I did this. And I, my proposal, especially the revised one, because again, I understand there were two issues in the previous one that would be near not impossible to enforce. Those are four. And yet, the proposal still, I think, will accomplish, other than the fact that it doesn't belong to them, the issue, I can't address that. But it will address the over occupancy on that thirty days a year that it occurs, and it will address many of the other issues. So again, that's all I'm asking at this point, is that I can submit the revised proposal that only has two lines changed, that I think addresses your issue, and that it get a fair hearing, and hopefully that it's approved to be put on the ballot. That's, I'm not asking you to vote for it, but that the rest of us get the opportunity to at least see it. They know what the first one is, they'll know what the second one is, and they'll have the ability to vote no or vote if they wish, like I will, I'll vote no on my own. But they'll have an alternative to the one that's currently on the ballot. That's all I ask.
Send it to me.
All right. Thank you.
Hi, Tom Ox, I'm fairly normal down here, but I have suggested for the pool and the renters, implement the pool rules and put them on a sheet of paper, and whoever's a renter has to initial every line, and they will understand the pool rules that are important.
Let me, let me, I agree with you, so let me tell you how this works. When the renters coming into the property management company, they receive all the rules, and they sign on there. And they fill out a registration, and they are supposedly by the PMs, they are supposed to be, they say, all the rules. Besides that, when they go with a guy who provide arrangements, which is an HOA guy, he say to them, for example, they are, "We are twelve." "No, sorry, I'm going to just giving you six arrangements, but we are twelve. I don't rent homes, I just give arrangements, and the limit in this house is six."
Okay, my wife and I leased the house for six months before we purchased, we never had a reservation.
How about you, if you lease a house for six months, you have to have a pass.
So you're just talking about short term?
Yes, it's short term. Yes, because that was one of the things that happened when the people, like Shabro said, they have not asked for a life forever. Yes, but for example, you were here, and they know you, and they let you go, but you have a pass, same thing. But there are people who is not paying dues, or they are short renters, so there are reasons that we have to check it. And this is for the benefit of everybody.
No doubt.
So we have to do it that way. But yes, I, I, I have some suggestions. As a matter of fact, we, when they come into the gate, the guys check, the guys tell them, you know, and we will work more on that. We will work more on that.
And then one other mind break, I'll text you on my end of it. The house that was kitty cornered from us on the street, they would have five cars parked there.
Which one?
All the time, Road one, I actually, Mexicali and Miriposa. It's a corner house. I don't get it, I don't know. Anyway, like I said, we saw this several times, what we've seen there, basically, just.
Send me a picture with that, send me a picture and the address for wherever is more, to point me where it is, and we will act on that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes.
I keep over the spring.
It becomes a custom now.
I just wanted to jump off here as last, I took my last, just to say, how much we all appreciate you. Thank you for the very, very good job. And also, to all of us, seeing the people here today, and I know Dick Peterson's here, and I know all these different people that have not spoken today, that are here, have an interest in this group and what's going on, and all the strength it takes to get up on the stage and talk about it, I just want to make an observation. Everybody here, I don't want to be too loud. Everybody here is on the same page, we're all trying to make this better. I honestly will only say one thing, I love the Mexican people here, it's pride here. And I love all you guys here, and watching the community grow, and watching downtown develop better and better and better. But in my sixteen years I've been around here, for the last two years living here full-time, I've gotten involved in the community with the supervisors, with TRC, and a few other folks, safe and whatnot. There's a lot of great people here, all trying to do the right thing and the same thing. And, you know, I'm not going to speak specific, you know, pools or any of these things, I think these things will take care of themselves, security seems to take care of things very, very well here. So Robert, thank you so much for what you do, that's all I just say.
Thank you, thank you, Robert. Well, there's a man on some line, so I want to thank you all for being here. See you in the year November. Thank you very much.